My guest stopped talking to us. I'll just let you know that I will be starting the session very, very soon. So please take your seat. Thank you. Good afternoon again, and I'm now going to reconvene and start the session. Before I do formally, I'd just like to thank the technicians up the back for the lovely music that we have during the breaks. It's been quite a variety, and I really enjoyed that bit of folk music, so that helped set the scene. I would like to request the government of the Philippines to introduce Document 27, which is entitled "Sustainable Development and Migratory Species," and otherwise called the Manila Declaration on Sustainable Development and Migratory Species. There has been, we had the document, but we're also aware that as a result of the High Level Panel and subsequent feedback from parties, there have been some enhancements, and I invite the Philippines to introduce the document and where we've got up to. Thank you very much, Philippines.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. In September 2015, countries around the world adopted the seventeen Sustainable Development Goals that aim to ensure prosperity for mankind and protection of the planet. The goals stand on the three pillars of sustainable development: economies, societies, and the environment. With the adoption of the SDGs, a new era of international collaboration and convergence was forged. Its seventeen goals and one hundred and sixty-nine targets seek to fulfill and strengthen a universal agenda of prosperity, peace, and partnerships for people and the planet by 2030. The 2030 agenda envisages a world in which humanity lives in harmony with nature and in which wildlife and other living species critical to functioning ecosystems are protected. It emphasizes a collective journey that mobilizes concerted and interconnected subregional, regional, and global efforts and resources towards sustainable development. This interconnectivity is reflected in the SDGs, while Goals fourteen and fifteen respectively center on marine and terrestrial biodiversity conservation. The protection of the environment is also inherent in many other goals, which also link to migratory species protection. The interconnectivity of the SDGs and the CMS is evident in a myriad of ways. The provision of alternative and sustainable livelihoods can reduce the incidence of poverty under Goal One and help decrease poaching and live capture of migratory species. Accessible, relevant education on local environments under Goal Four may lead to greater appreciation of the value of migratory species and their routes. Beyond our stirring words and paper commitments, we see these links in each species, each resource-dependent community that relies on their migrations. The town of Don Sol, for instance, benefits from whale shark tourism. Coastal communities across the globe benefit from ecosystem services afforded by marine turtles that feed on seagrass beds, which in turn provide spawning and nursery grounds for commercially important species, including fish and marine invertebrates such as shrimp, shellfish, and echinoderms. Predation and scavenging by migratory species help insulate human populations from diseases and pestilence. Avian, mammal, and marine seed and larval dispersants ensure food security. Significantly, migratory species are also natural barometers and early warning systems for planetary health. The time to unite and act is now. The rapid degradation of habitats, the contamination of the environment, and the inordinate loss of biodiversity threaten our fundamental, indivisible, interdependent, and interrelated rights to food, water, health, a balanced ecology, and thus our very existence. Cognizant of the severity and urgency of the challenges we grapple with, we have gathered in this mega-diverse archipelago, one that is also a critical stopover for many migratory species to renew and strengthen our commitment to the Convention on Migratory Species as we face adversity head-on. This conference of parties is a crucial opportunity to set standards that will have impacts on legal, political, social, and economic frameworks. This resolution recognizes the significant contribution of migratory wildlife to sustainable development, especially in the areas of agriculture, forestry, fisheries, tourism, energy, transport, and trade. Furthermore, this resolution encourages state parties to develop national frameworks and implement relevant plans to achieve the goals of the convention with a view of contributing to the achievement of the SDGs. It also invites the private sector to engage in dialogue to align policies and objectives to the CMS, and recognizes the crucial role of indigenous and local communities in the sustainable management of natural resources. Moreover, this resolution directs the Secretariat to collect relevant data and information and compile a report detailing the link between migratory species and sustainable development. We thus strongly urge the seats, the state parties, to support this effort, to align relevant national thrusts and development strategies with the SDGs and CMS agreements and targets. Document 27, the first iteration of the resolution, has since been enriched by input from delegates in the High Level Panel chaired by the Philippines' head of delegation, Secretary Roy A. Simatu. Among the recommendations presented are: First, the importance of achieving by 2030 sustainable development in its three dimensions: economic, social, and environmental. Second, the significance of the adoption of the UN Ocean Conference in June 2017, of "Our Oceans, Our Future," Call for Action Declaration, and the endorsement thereof by the UN General Assembly in its Resolution 71/312. Third, the promotion of high-level political awareness and acceptance of the importance of migratory species conservation as part of the environmental underpinning of social and economic goals. Fourth, improvement of engagement by stakeholders through coordination among national focal points of relevant multilateral environmental agreements: the government and the private sector, and the integration of wildlife considerations of their economic and social policies. Fifth, creation of opportunities for livelihood support, national economies, and community well-being that can be created through sustainable wildlife watching, ecotourism, land rehabilitation, and related initiatives. Sixth, integration of the goals and targets of the strategic plan for migratory species 2016 to 2023 into work programs under the convention as a way to facilitate understanding of the importance of migratory species for the SDGs and to take action to raise awareness of the strategic plan. And seventh, engagement in preparations for the post-2020 follow-up to the strategic plan for biodiversity and ensure that migratory species concerns are properly reflected during the biodiversity summit in 2020. Guided and inspired by this enhanced resolution, state parties will be making development policies, decisions, and plans of action post-COP12 that will be shaped and crafted by many more people than are present here. As the champion of migratory species, we must keep asking ourselves as we proceed: If we will not act, who will? When will we act if not now? The Manila Declaration should spur decisions and actions that would cascade benefits that deliver the security of migratory species and therefore our future. Their future is our future, and there is no other time to act but now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Philippines, and you can see by the applause the enthusiasm with which this initiative has been greeted. I certainly sincerely trust that we will be able to recommend to the plenary that we adopt this resolution, but of course, we will need the text eventually, and there will be an opportunity for us to formally make that recommendation. I do know that a lot of work has gone in, not only in drafting the document, but also in responding to the feedback from the High Level Panel and in discussion with interested parties. So with that understanding, and the understanding that this has been enhanced significantly along its journey, I will open the floor for comment and see whether we can progress this. I have a request from the European Union and a request from Brazil. And that's it so far, so, and I understand there have been discussions with those parties, so, EU, please.
Thank you, Chair. The EU and its member states are happy to welcome the Manila Declaration on Sustainable Development and Migratory Species and the related draft decisions submitted by the government of Philippines. The EU and its member states support the adoption of the proposed resolution and draft decision with the amendments from the High Level Panel. We are particularly pleased with the amendments which aim at enhancing the relationship between the migratory species efforts and the global context of the IEG targets and the SDGs. We furthermore also believe that COP should provide a clear mandate to the CMS Secretariat to be involved in the follow-up to the strategic plan for the biodiversity to ensure adequate integration of migratory species concerns both in the strategic planning beyond 2020 and the biodiversity summit foreseen in 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, EU. I'll hear from Brazil, and I've had a request from Monaco as well. Brazil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, just like to commend the Philippine delegation for negotiating this draft, resolution, and related decisions, and to lend our support to this draft. We think it's been carefully negotiated and drafted, and we do support the adoption of the document. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. Monaco?
Thank you, Chair. Je voudrais, au nom de la Principauté de Monaco, remercier le gouvernement des Philippines pour avoir organisé cette table ronde de haut niveau qui a conduit à la Déclaration de Miami. Monaco soutient de manière très forte cette déclaration. Je voudrais aussi souligner que nous avons abordé lors de cette table ronde le tourisme responsable et que la Principauté se félicite aussi que l'Organisation Mondiale du Tourisme pour la première fois a été habillée une convention sur le tourisme éco-responsable et nous allons envisager pour Monaco une signature rapide de ce document. Merci.
Merci, Monaco. Do I have any other requests for the floor? And we have a request from Kenya. Kenya, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Kenya, we also join the previous speaker in welcoming this very useful declaration. We note the importance of synergy, the importance of involving the private sector, the importance of engaging communities, the importance of engaging the various stakeholders, and we believe it is through this that we'll be able to conserve migratory species. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Kenya. Any other requests for intervention on this topic? Okay, well, we have enthusiastic support. What we still need to have before us is the CRP, conference room paper that has the final amended version, so can I request that, if you haven't already done it, those parties who have been engaged in this with the Philippines, just work with the Philippines, supported by Laura from the Secretariat, to finalize the document for us to sign off on, probably tomorrow, if we're lucky. So that's my recommendation, and I think that's a very satisfactory conclusion from a lot of, from a lot of work. We'll see the final version. Any other final comments, Philippines? Are you satisfied with that process? I see nodding, so we'll adjourn the item, but in the anticipation that we've very happily completed it, and we'll see the final result very shortly. So with that, I would like to proceed to the next item, and we are optimistically thinking that we'll get through a good chunk of today's agenda, because I do know that quite a number of the items that we had before us have been considered by working groups, and although we don't have the conference room papers as a result of those working groups, they will be able to report conclusions. So I think we're appropriate. We will be asking the leaders of the working groups to report, and the first one in that context, I understand, is marine debris, so that's the next item on our agenda, 24.4.1, and document of the same number, and I'll ask the Secretariat to quickly introduce that, and then we'll hear where the working groups got to. That's marine debris. Thank you, Secretariat.
Thank you, Chair. Marine debris is a threat that CMS has so far had two resolutions on, adopted at the previous, okay, adopted at the previous two COPs, and as was the case already with some of the others, we discussed noise, for example. This consolidated resolution that resulted from that turned out to be rather complex, and we felt the need to propose some further revisions to it to streamline it more, but also to update it, especially with regard to the role of microplastics in the environment, but also as far as the ghost gear problem is concerned. Actually, since these were adopted, some further thinking has been done on these issues, as well as on sort of the more fundamental solutions to the problem, not just reactions, but actually actions that parties can take in order not only to minimize the input of litter into the water through improved waste collection and management, but longer-term solutions, including a more circular economy where waste is minimized already in the design stage of products. So in order to include those more recent changes, also fully in line with the decision taken, or the resolution taken at UNEA, this UNEA Resolution 211 on marine plastic litter and microplastics, adopted in 2016, some changes were proposed to the consolidated resolution as you find it before you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the Chair of the Working Group want to add anything to what the Secretariat has told us? Heidi can report on the Working Group deliberations, so we'll hear, we'll hear that first. No, no, the Chair of the Working Group wishes to speak.
Just as a position, because there's a number of items here which Heidi will be presenting on, and also, you know, she's president, she's working hard with us in the Working Group, so when she does a presentation, it would be quite useful and save a bit of time, I think, if she simply just rolled on and said, "This is where we're at with the Working Group." Thank you.
Thank you, that's great, thanks. Go ahead, Heidi.
This will also be quick, so we discussed this document. There were some proposals for text changes which the Working Group agreed to, and the Working Group has concluded its work on this item and is ready to forward the document.
Excuse me, Heidi, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I get at this issue with the microphones.
So this is a microphone test? Is this one better? Yep. Good. So, yeah, I was just confirming that the Working Group has considered this item, has taken on board some text proposals, none of them changing dramatically the substance of the document, and has concluded its work on that, so would be ready to pass on this resolution.
Thank you very much. So given that the Working Group has, and we knew had been instructed to consider this matter, and has concluded its work, my proposal is that we await the conference room paper, the CRP, and then make our decision on the presentation of that conference room paper. In the interest of time, I think that would avoid us having to discuss things more than once. Are people happy with that? I don't see any objection, so we'll adjourn that item, and, but also in doing so, thank the Secretariat and the Working Group for what they've done so far on that matter. So the next item is 24.4.2, Climate Change in Migratory Species. I'm Chair of a Committee on Migratory Species, I should be able to say it properly. Document 24.4.2 will be introduced by Colin Galbraith, who's just boundled up onto the stage.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon. Just a very short introduction, if I can, to the draft resolution. Climate change, as you will see, oh, sorry. We've done quite a lot of work on climate change since the last conference of the parties, and you can see that we had a workshop back in February, and we should thank the government of Germany in particular for supporting that workshop in Bonn, it was very productive indeed. Can I also thank the group members from the Climate Change Working Group who have been hugely supportive in taking this work forward. You have the resolution before you, it also has an attached program of work, and you may recall from previous COPs that that program moves over the years, that is the fundamentally important way that we address climate change. Briefly, just an overview of what the Working Group has seen in the last few years, you can see there that climate change is having a significant impact on species and habitats around the world, and that change is happening ever faster, and indeed, it is the rate of change compounding impacts from habitat, other habitat changes, and from unsustainable use that leads to the overall problems that we're facing. And that can be on individual species, it can be at the ecosystem level, so it impacts not just migratory species, but human well-being as well, and harping back to earlier comments this morning in presentations, that link from biodiversity, from migratory species to human well-being is really seen and focused through the work we're doing on climate change. The Working Group has taken a very simple and slightly different approach in its program of work. of work. What we've tried to do is identify species that you may not have thought about earlier as being impacted by climate change. I put up some examples here, the narwhal, for example, the loggerhead turtle, a range of penguin species. So we are looking across the board in a different way to try and get common, simple stories that we can articulate to the wider public, so that they understand climate change is an issue for them, not just for the technologically minded and for the scientists. So we are looking at species examples. We're also beginning to look at ecosystem examples, and here is a link to the wider unit family, to CBD and to other initiatives, which is migratory species obviously depend on a range of ecosystems for their own survival. We have put some examples here, ranging from African savanna through to the northeast Atlantic, through to other areas around the world, where we are seeing rapid change, but we're also seeing that migratory species are affected as part of that change. We also identified a number of barriers, this is what I think of as the depressing slide, that why are we not reacting to climate change faster? Why are we not having more of a positive impact in dealing with climate change? Some of these are quite interesting in that lack of funding, lack of capacity, we know about, we've heard over many years, but increasingly, the benefits of action that are being taken are not being seen. And again, this goes back to earlier presentations, we need to communicate about biodiversity, about migratory species and climate change in a different and simple way. So the barriers are interesting, we have a focus on megafauna. Importantly, we have a silo approach to dealing with climate change, and much of what we need to tackle in the program of work and in the resolution is about coordination, is about working together in a new and invigorating way going forward. So having said there are lots of barriers, what action can be taken? And again, this is in the program of work attached to the resolution. There is a multitude of ways that we can take action. We can develop action plans for vulnerable species, and we've seen and heard many of these in development. We can prioritize those habitats that are absolutely crucial, and certainly some of the presentations we've heard earlier and some of the side events here are focusing on critical site networks, and that's extremely valuable. We can actually enhance our monitoring, we need evidence and information to underpin the action that we take for climate change, so that we are credible in the arguments that we put forward. And that credibility, for me as Chair of the Working Group, is absolutely fundamental. So there are a range of actions we can take. We can only take these actions with your support through the resolution, through your comments and through your support for future work programs going forward. The resolution and the program of work obviously will set our program for the next three-year period, and indeed for longer, so we do look forward to your comments and support. We do have a little side event just in passing tomorrow lunchtime on climate change and on critical sites for migratory waterbirds that you're obviously all invited to. But can I just close by, once again, asking for your comments and support for the resolution? Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Colin. So the question is whether we endorse the proposed resolution and decisions. As Colin has intimated, he's willing to hear feedback, so there is the opportunity to set up a working group that he will coordinate. But of course, we may well just wish to endorse what you've prepared as a draft. On that note, open the floor for comment, for a few comments, and then if it looks like there is a lot to say and more work to be done, then we have the opportunity to do so, so I will close the session. So either way, we won't talk long on this here. So I see the EU, and do I see any other parties just before EU starts, just so I know, Brazil? And of course, there may be others, so EU, then Brazil, thank you, EU.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The EU and its member states recognize climate change already as an adverse impact on migratory species, and that there is concern that the situation will likely further aggravate, and that changes may happen fast. Stressing at the same time that it is necessary to enhance protected areas and network, EU and its member states encourage the full implementation of biodiversity strategies at all levels, and urge stepping up efforts to keep global temperature increase well below two degrees centigrade above the pre-industrial levels, and to pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase even further to 1.5 degrees centigrade. We also encourage further work for better understanding the changes patterns to increase the changes of successful adaptation. The EU and its member states consider the climate change as one of the most demanding challenges humankind currently faces. This program of work is therefore an important activity for the convention. We appreciate the work done by the Climate Change Working Group of the CMS Council, Scientific Council, and encourage parties and relevant international organizations to implement the actions contained in this program of work with a view to maximizing the benefits to migratory species. Chair, we have some text proposals that we actually sent in writing, it's nothing substantial, more like editorial kind, but if those are accepted, we can support the adaptation of the draft resolution as with those amendments, so thank you, Chair.
Thank you, EU. I'll wait and to decide whether to consider those amendments here, when I've heard what others have to say. So we have Brazil, and then Mongolia, Brazil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to commend the work conducted by the Climate Change Working Group, and also the important assistance provided by the Secretariat in preparing this draft resolution and related draft decisions. Our delegation has a few suggestions in terms of drafting. We are in agreement in general terms to the text, but we have some suggestions, so I don't know, I'd like to seek your guidance in that regard. We could forward our recommendations to the Secretariat, or we could also join in an informal meeting to discuss those suggestions, but I'd like to seek your guidance in that respect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brazil. And as with the EU, I will wait until I've heard what parties have to say before I know what the most efficient way of dealing with this is. We had a number of options, and you've articulated them well, so I'll make a call on that soon. Mongolia, please.
Thank you, Chair. And Mongolia strongly supports the resolution, and we would like to thank the Secretariat for bringing the synergies and cross-country consideration agendas. Mongolia is one of the most vulnerable countries to the climate change, and the country is landlocked, so we're having lots of impacts of the global warming, and so basically, we are supporting the resolution, and we would like to assure that we would do our part to implement the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mongolia. Do I have any other parties who wish to speak? I don't see any, so I think in the interest of efficiency, what I would ask is that the EU and Brazil work with the Chair of the Working Group, Mr. Colin Galbraith, so that he can then prepare an amended version that we can sign off later on. Does that make sense for EU and Brazil and other parties? Okay, so with that, I'll again adjourn that item with a view to receiving. And you have two options, you can prepare a Conference Room Paper, or you can come back with amendments that we can discuss if they're minor. So there's, I think the Working Group Chair can decide what the most efficient way of presenting back to this party is, but if you can coordinate with him, and if there's a need for a room, then I'm sure the Secretariat will provide that. Is that okay for now? Thank you, I have a thumbs up, which is a good sign. The next item is Item 24.4.3, Conservation Implications of Animal Culture and Social Complexity. And I'll just quickly observe that, recall this coming up at the last COP as a cetacean culture paper, which broadened out into implications of culture across a wide variety of groups, which was a very interesting and worthwhile development, in my view. But that's enough editorial comment from me. I would like to ask the Chair of the Expert Working Group on Animal Culture, Giuseppe Dischiara, to comment, to introduce the paper, please.
Thank you, Chair. As you recall, Resolution 1123 on Conservation Implications of Cetacean Culture, which was adopted at COP 11, requested the Scientific Council to establish an intercessional expert working group to address the conservation implications of culture and social complexity. And that time, the focus was on cetaceans, although it was not limited to cetaceans. The resolution invited relevant CMS scientific counselors for taxa other than cetaceans to review the findings of the workshop and engage in this expert group. So in June 2015, external experts nominated by the Scientific Council were invited to join, and as of May 2017, 47 scientists of various backgrounds were members of the expert group. Of these, the lion's share were of cetaceans, of course, mostly because of the historical development of this matter, with 19 cetacean experts, but the group also included eight bird experts, four elephant experts, four primate experts, two reptile experts, et cetera, and other subjects related to the matters such as ecology of information, social evolution, and biodiversity. The Resolution 1123 further requested the expert group to develop a list of priority species and report of its findings to COP 12. Following the report to the Session Committee of the Scientific Council, the expert group continued its deliberation, and the results of this work are presented in Annex 1 to the document we have in front, including references to two case studies to make matters even more clear. So going back to the draft resolution, which is towards the end of the document, the resolution really, actually, it's not a resolution, but it's only a set of draft decisions, and so there is a part of the decisions which are directed to the Expert Working Group on Culture and Social Complexity, which include, of course, subject to availability of resources, to develop a work plan to take this work forward using the case studies and others, develop a list of priority species listed on the CMS appendices for a comprehensive investigation of culture and social structure, and commence a more detailed analysis as appropriate, develop a taxonomy of culture across other taxa of relevance to CMS to assist in determining priority species for case studies, and to make recommendations to the Scientific Council by the fourth meeting of the Session Committee, that is, in two more. The decision directed to the Secretariat involves, subject to the availability of resources, to convene a workshop to assist the Expert Working Group on Culture and Social Complexity to proceed in its work, and I'm, as the Chair of the Scientific Council mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we have the great pleasure of announcing that the workshop is going to be supported by an Italian national park next April. So this workshop is actually going to happen very soon. And finally, a decision directed to the Scientific Council is to consider the outputs of the Expert Group on Culture and Social Complexity and make recommendations to the 13th meeting of the Conference of the Parties. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Giuseppe. I understand that the Aquatic Working Group had a look at this and felt that there were no amendments required, so given that feedback, I think I will put it to you that we endorse this document and these draft decisions. Do I have any comment? Can the NGO on the far side just hold up the... Sorry about that, I've got you now. Whale and Dolphin Conservation, so we want to hear from Aker Bams, or any other parties first, the EU, and then Aker Bams, and then Whale and Dolphin Conservation. EU?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a bit of confusion, because it said that this topic has been to Aquatic Working Group, but from our understanding, the animal culture and social complexity has not been discussed in Aquatic Working Group, neither to other working groups yet, so proposal is to still say something about it?
Thank you, EU. I'll ask the Secretariat to clarify, maybe we got our wires crossed, but we'll seek clarification.
Thank you, Chair. On the first session of the Aquatic Working Group on Monday evening, we went through all the documents it would potentially consider, and this document was decided to be moved on immediately without being considered, because no one present saw the need to open discussion on it. Thank you.
And EU, I don't want that to prevent you from having input, I think it's important that we don't have any misunderstandings in considering documents. Do you wish to say something on it now? EU?
Yes, thank you. EU and its member state acknowledge the work done by the Expert Group, and note that social information use, social learning, and result on cultures have rising importance in conservation across a range of texts relevant to CMS. We support the draft resolution with some minor changes, and welcome the proposal to develop a list of key factors for identifying priority species and populations listed on the CMS where social learning may influence their conservation under the auspices of the Secretariat and Scientific Council, and we will, of course, present those amendments in writing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So are we satisfied that those amendments, well, we're satisfied that those amendments are minor, and we can proceed, but first I want to hear from Aker Bams.
Thank you, Chair. This is to propose that in the sake of synergies, Aker Bams will be pleased to assist the Expert Working Group on Culture and Social Complexity.
Thank you, Aker Bams, that will be noted in the report. And next, it's Whale and Dolphin Conservation, with the shiny sign.
Apologies for that. Thank you, Chair, and given this is the first time speaking to the floor, may I briefly just convey a huge congratulations to the Government of the Philippines for such a outstanding COP. In 2016... In two thousand and fourteen, CMS and WDC jointly hosted a seminal workshop at the Linian Society in London on the conservation implications of cetacean culture. Following the groundbreaking Resolution eleven point two-three passed at COP eleven in Ecuador, we're delighted to see this work now expand across taxa for other migratory marine terrestrial and avian species. Resolution eleven point two-three recognized that the impact of removal of individuals from populations of socially complex species may have consequences beyond simply a reduction in absolute numbers. And this may particularly be the case where knowledge of migratory routes is lost. We commend the work of CMS thus far for taking a strong leadership role in this cutting-edge area of science and look forward to further examining this theme in relation to the concerted action on eastern tropical Pacific sperm whales, Agenda Item twenty-six point two point two. Thank you.
Thank you, Whale and Dolphin Conservation. So can I take it that the meeting is in support of the subject to the amendments, editorial amendments being proposed by the EU? And would you accept that the EU provides those to the secretariat? Or can the EU read them out now? I think we need to hear them and then we can move on. Thank you, EU.
Thank you, Chair. So I will walk you through those. So the first one is under paragraph twelve, AA, point B, where the expert group, subject to availability of resources, is requested to, rather than shall, to develop. Just this editorial comment. Under point D, the wording is proposed as follows. Make recommendations to the meeting of the Sessional Committee preceding COP thirteen based on the evidence presented in the case studies appended to UNAP, CMS, COP twelve, et cetera. The next one is under twelve CC, point ten. The proposal is to delete the second point, identify species or population in need of concerted action. We feel that we still need to learn more before initiating concrete action for that. And finally, there's twelve BB. The Scientific Council should... And point number B, subject to availability of resources, consider the outputs of the Expert Group on Culture and Social Complexity and, based on its findings, make recommendations to the thirteenth meeting of Conference of Parties. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, EU. I think those are relatively straightforward. Do you hear any objection to us accepting those amendments, those proposed amendments? I see no objection, and I know that the secretariat already has the text. So with that, subject to those amendments, I would like this committee to endorse and transmit that recommendation to the plenary. Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the working group. Right. Thank you. The next item, we're running well now. The next item is bycatch. And the appointed councillor for bycatch is not going to get away with keeping quiet on matters in the purview of his working group. So I invite Barry Baker to introduce Document twenty-four point four point four. Barry?
Thank you. And let me assure you all that the appointed councillor for bycatch revels in the opportunity to talk about his favorite topic. So Document twenty-four point four, a resolution on bycatch, has been presented to simplify what is a very complex consolidation and corporation of recent developments. The, as you, many here would be aware, bycatch is the incidental capture of non-target species in fisheries and is a universal phenomenon. Trawls, sines, hooks and lines, gill nets and drift nets, and even crepot lines and creels take their toll on many species of animals. And these include marine mammals, such as small cetaceans, and pinnipeds, seals, seabirds, turtles, and non-target fish species. The worst affected by bycatch are generally the long-lived, slow-breeding species such as whales, seals, turtles, and albatrosses. But bycatch is not the only threat to aquatic species by far, but it does affect many species listed by CMS and covered by its agreements. And for many species, it remains the most severe threat that they face. Addressing it effectively requires collaboration between all relevant stakeholders and significant improvements in the monitoring and the development and implementation of mitigation measures. Over the last twenty years, the CMS COP has adopted four resolutions on bycatch. These have generally gone by the name of bycatch. There's a Resolution six point two, Resolution eight point one four, Resolution nine point one eight. But Resolution ten point one four would focus specifically on the bycatch of CMS-listed species in gill net fisheries. And these have all been consolidated into the document we have in front of us. In order to simplify the very complex consolidation process that was required in putting four resolutions together, the document proposes revisions to the consolidated version. And these are changes to the preamble, where we've sought to shorten updates and make the preamble of the clauses more applicable to all affected species covered by CMS. We've looked to provide clear structuring of the operative paragraphs. And this has been introduced to improve and clarify the resolution, principally relating to four areas. These relate to participation in regional fisheries management organizations, the development and implementation of bycatch mitigation methods and data collection, collaboration and cooperation with other relevant international fora, and where appropriate, the RFMOs, with a view to avoiding duplication, increasing synergies, and raising the profile of CMS and CMS agreements related to aquatic species. And we've also introduced some textual changes, mostly to remove repetition, clarify the intent, and update the resolution in respect to technological and financial assistance. The Aquatic Working Group has considered this resolution and we've made a couple of very minor changes to it. And the working group has now passed it through to the COW for acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just seek clarification? When you say you've passed it through to the COW, there is a conference room paper that's in the process? Not yet. So that's in the process?
It's, sorry, yeah, it's in the process. The working group has concluded its work on it and there is a document will be presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to you and the secretariat participants, Chris and Heidi, I think, who have prepared a very clear document, in my view, on a complex and difficult issue. So I will invite brief comments if people wish to, but on the understanding that the working group has considered this and made amendments accordingly, and there's been lots of opportunity, I would suggest that we agree to endorse this, but in anticipation of receiving a conference room paper. So we're not actually endorsing it formally. But certainly, I invite comments. So I see Argentina, I also see IWC. There may be other parties as well. And there's someone over there. There's Ecuador. And HSI. So I'll start with Argentina, please.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. En cuanto a la resolución sobre bycatch, la redacción de punto ocho, al menos encajado, no es todo cara. Además, se armonia cuando se requiere el intercambio, el desarrollo superior de activos. O sea, que no se intercambie lo mismo sino que se intercambie información o conocimientos. Sostamos que debe ser realmente equipado. Y porque un pueblo tiene sentido, la acción activa, que sería... se vientos a todas las partes que se han estado en la introducción de especies acuáticas, que regulan los aprendizajes cuidados y que no sean de que ya es importante el que se inste a acción con conocimiento. A que valoren el mundo ente, con otros países, a fin de asocies, que la mayor posibilidad, la captura de ciertas entidades mediante el intercambio de información y el desarrollo superior de conocimiento que se tendría que usar estos picates para mandar las opiniones magnantes y los datos. Por otra parte, en la resolución, la página nueve, bycatch mitigation measures and data collection, ser comenta que se lleve a cabo evaluación respecto de implicancias de aturadas del Estado y Mal, de la captura existente de otras marinas, que incluyen determinaciones sobre sus efectos subletas relacionados con medidas y... y sus posibles implicancias en la conservación de estas especies. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Argentina. With regard to the first recommendation, suggestion you made, what was translated was very similar to what's in the English version, so I think... So we'll get the text from you for that. Thank you very much for both of those. Thank you. Now, next I have Ecuador. Ecuador, please.
Gracias, señor presidente, por permitirme intervenir. Este documento hace... considera que la captura existente... la parte de la que era muy afectada, como todo el otro tema, el comportamiento que ha dicho nuestro país de encima, que reconomos que después de cuándo sea, que el que quiera ser, se entiende. Se hace muy amado a los party, para que colaboremos con ellos. Puede que sea un mismo grado y no puede que la imagen, como la objetivo de expresión, obviamente, ahora sobre el hombre para el cual está el pueblo, que actúa la... a la posible decir, ¿no? Y amigos que tratan para mí toda la gente. Este programa se escribió con esta para poder un poco... comprar información que también...
Thank you, Ecuador. And if there's no disagreement, then I think if you could provide that text, that would be very helpful. Thank you. I next have IWC, followed by SPREP, and then HSI. IWC?
Thank you, Chair. Bycatch, an entanglement of cetaceans in both commercial and other active fishing gears and in abandoned, lost, and otherwise discarded fishing gear, is arguably the single biggest threat to cetacean populations worldwide. It is estimated that well over three hundred thousand whales and dolphins die each year from entanglement in active fishing gear, not including those in abandoned and lost gear. This is a conservation and welfare issue of global concern. Addressing the issue of bycatch and its mitigation requires concerted global effort. And the IWC recognizes important existing efforts, including those made by individual governments and, under the auspices of CMS and its daughter agreements, the FAO, regional fisheries management organizations, fishing communities, and ongoing work by NGOs. The IWC has highlighted the need for strengthened collaboration across these organizations and all relevant stakeholders. The IWC has undertaken extensive work in this field, including through the work of its scientific committee and its global whale entanglement response network, which, since it was established in two thousand and twelve, has trained more than one thousand entanglement responders across thirty countries. In two thousand and sixteen, the IWC established a new standing working group on bycatch and a bycatch mitigation initiative, supported by an expert panel and a coordinator. In collaboration with other organizations, this initiative aims to develop, assess, and promote bycatch prevention and mitigation measures worldwide and to assist countries in assessing, addressing bycatch. The IWC welcomes the CMS as a member of its standing working group on bycatch and looks forward to its continued engagement as this work progresses. With this in mind, we welcome the references to the IWC and its bycatch mitigation initiative in the draft resolution and the opportunities that this resolution sets out for collaborative and complementary efforts on this important and urgent issue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, IWC. Your comments will certainly be noted. And next I have SPREP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. SPREP appreciates the excellent work of the bycatch councillor and the secretariat. And we wish to advise that thanks to the generous support of the European Union through the Pacific European Union Marine Project, SPREP will be coordinating a bycatch mitigation project in the Pacific Islands region between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-two. We will be very pleased to collaborate with the bycatch councillor, the CMS secretariat, the IWC, Pacific Island parties to the CMS, and other interested parties in the planning and implementation of this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the news and for your brief intervention, SPREP. Our next call on HSI.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon from the Humane Society International over here on the far right. The latest estimate that we have available to us, as alluded to by the representative here of the International Whaling Commission, is that hundreds of thousands of cetaceans are being taken each year in fisheries around the world. That estimate is now quite old, and the real figure may actually be much greater. Bycatch is driving several species to extinction. Some of them will be well-known to delegates and include the vaquita. It also presents very significant welfare concerns. In many parts of the world, we simply don't have estimates of bycatch. We do not know how populations are being affected. And trying to develop efforts to mitigate and address bycatch is inherently very difficult indeed. So along with others, of course, we welcome the attention that international bodies such as this convention, the IWC, FAO, and SPREP can bring to this issue. And we'd also like to thank the appointed councillor for bycatch for his efforts. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much, HSI. I have a request from Peru.
Gracias, señor presidente. Solamente para decir que apoyamos tanto las propuestas de precisión. Realizar mayores investigaciones respecto a las causas de muerte, de desparamientos. En Perú tenemos una frecuencia de desparamiento muy grande. Este año hemos tenido una frecuencia de mortalidad enorme. Y tenemos, creemos que este documento es apoyarlo, pero con las precisiones señaladas tanto por Ecuador como Argentina. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Peru. I think with that, I'll close the debate on this. And I might just briefly invite the appointed councillor for bycatch just to respond to the other suggested amendments, I think, which we have in writing anyway. Just how are you going to proceed with those? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And firstly, thanks to the parties and the other organizations here that have provided such strong support for the resolution that we have. here that have provided such strong support for the resolution that we have in front of us, and I'd personally like to thank all the support I've received from the CMS over a number of years now I've been the bycatch counselor. It is a major, it's a serious problem, and there's been voluntary contributions that have assisted us in trying to find ways to improve the way we deal with this threat, and they've been well received and very grateful for that. With respect to the textual changes, I didn't hear all of them, but I would anticipate it might be useful if I worked with the secretariat when we see these in writing, just to be sure that, you know, that we're comfortable with where they're going, of course, it's the parties' right to make amendments, but I'd just run my eye over them if that's okay, and we can confirm later that it's satisfactory, but they did sound to be, they did sound to be fairly useful. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you email your amendments, that the secretariat doesn't already have them, to that address which you have, and Heidi will compile them, thank you very much. They sounded fine to me, but, you know, I'm only the chair. All right, thank you for all of the effort on that and for the feedback. The next item is energy and, no, I beg your pardon, sustainable boat-based wildlife watching tourism, twenty-four point four point five, and again, Heidi, the secretariat will introduce the document.
You Chair, I don't actually know where in the annotated agenda the tourism comes from, not in the title of the document, but anyway. So, we are considering a resolution that was adopted by the last conference of the parties, resolution eleven twenty-nine, and this resolution, amongst other things, requested the scientific council to develop guidelines on marine boat-based wildlife watching for different taxonomic groups. Background information that was that there is very little guidance available internationally on species other than cetaceans. So, in document twenty-four point four point five, you find a short background document and then three annexes. The first one contains the resolution eleven twenty-nine with a small amendment proposed in order to adopt the guidelines that were developed in response to that paragraph, and correspondingly, the paragraph that was requesting this, since it was fulfilled, is proposed for deletion, so the main changes. And in annex two, you will find the guidelines that were developed. So, again, it is my pleasure to specifically thank our sponsor, the Principality of Monaco, who under the Champions Program made also this work possible. So, these guidelines cover a number of the species groups that CMS is concerned with as far as boat-based wildlife watching is concerned, namely sirenians, marine turtles, pet, elasmobranch, and seabirds. And they contain for general considerations that concern boat-based wildlife watching, including, for example, the need for environmental impact assessments, they contain considerations about vessels, about licensing and permits of them, and also other matters to take into account, and then they have species-specific considerations that would allow legislators to develop national guidelines for boat-based wildlife watching focusing on these species groups if they so wish. And each of the species chapters outlines the specific risks and describes early indicators of disturbance, factors to consider, management considerations, guidelines, and suggested thresholds. So, reading the document, you will have noted that the guidelines do not cover in-water interactions, such as swim with or dive with activities at this stage, and, but we have already under the aquatic issues item discussed a resolution on in-water interactions with aquatic mammals, and there already the suggestion was made to see in the next triennium whether these work streams can be combined. So, in annex three, you find draft decisions, and these include also a point on collaboration with the IWC on developing the joint IWC-CMS whale watching handbook, which will cover all types of cetacean watching from vessels. So, the working group on aquatic issues has already considered this resolution, and actually right at the beginning, has made some minor amendments, and has concluded its work on it.
Thank you. So, given that the working group has concluded its work, has made some amendments, which we will see in a CRP in due course, I would like just to move on quite quickly, but of course I don't want to prevent parties and other observers from making a comment on this. So I have the IWC's flag over there, and any parties wish to comment? No, so IWC, I call on you.
Thank you Chair. The IWC addresses the issue of whale watching through its scientific and conservation committees, and this includes studying the potential impacts of whale watching on individual whales, their populations and their habitats, and the development of principles and guidelines for whale watching. In addition, and as just noted by the CMS secretariat, the IWC is developing an online handbook on whale watching, which will be an interactive tool to support responsible whale watching practices. The whale watching handbook will enable policymakers, regulators, industry, and the public to retrieve relevant information based on their management question, species, or region of interest. It will also include a range of case studies to support policies and decision-making. As noted in document twenty-four point four point five, the IWC and the CMS are collaborating on the development of the whale watching handbook to support the CMS's work on sustainable boat-based wildlife watching with regards to cetaceans, and the IWC welcomes this collaboration. Work on the whale watching handbook is now well underway, and a first draft will be presented to the IWC scientific committee in April 2018. As part of the review process, CMS will be given an opportunity to provide input and review drafts, and we will work with the CMS secretariat on that process. The handbook is due for completion by the IWC commission meeting in September 2018. The IWC would like to extend its thanks to CMS for their support in the development of the handbook, and for their offer to undertake the translation of the handbook into French and Spanish. In addition, the IWC welcomes the CMS as a member of its standing working group on whale watching. The IWC looks forward to continued collaboration with the CMS and others on the development of the whale watching handbook. Thank you.
Thank you very much IWC, and your comments are noted, and we look forward to both the handbook and the CRP. I have a request from ACOBAMs, ACOBAMs please.
Thank you Chair. Very shortly, this is to inform you that the ACOBAMs also has a working group on whale watching, which is currently working on guidelines for monitoring programs, and that's maximizing the chance of detecting potential adverse impacts of whale watching activities on individual cetaceans and on populations also. And also, this working group is working on establishing a common procedure for data collection system for whale watching vessels to be implemented in the ACOBAMs area. Thank you.
Thank you very much ACOBAMs. So if there's no more comment, I would like to thank the secretariat and the working group, and look forward to receiving the final version. So, the next item is where we're coming out of the water again, I think, well maybe not, we're in the water as well, energy and migratory species, twenty-four point four point six is the document, and the secretariat is going to introduce the document, when you're ready Marco.
Yeah, thank you very much Mr. Chairman. Indeed, we are still a bit on water, but also make a bit on land and on air as well. Yes, I am referring to document twenty-four point four point six. This document basically summarizes the activities of the convention during the last triennium in relation to interaction of migratory species with the energy infrastructures, and particularly focuses on the establishment and operationalization of a multi-stakeholder task force on reconciling selected energy sector development with migratory species conservation. In short, the energy task force that resolution eleven point twenty-seven requested the secretariat to establish. I'm not going to go into any detail in terms of content of the document, the report has been available for several months now. I would love just to acknowledge two roles, first is the role of the federal government of Germany in supporting the activities of the energy task force throughout the triennium through the migratory species champions program. I can easily say that without that support, probably not a single one of the activities mentioned in the report would have taken place. The second role I would like to acknowledge is the one of Birdlife International as coordinator of task force through an agreement with the secretariat, in fact, differently from other task forces, while CMS secretariat is still playing a significant role in facilitating the activities of the task force, however, the main responsibility at the moment is with bird life. I would like to, so as I said, I'm not going to mention in detail any of the activities, there are however been, since this report was finalized already a few months ago, been some significant development in relation to the activity of the task force that I would like to briefly mention. The task force held its second meeting in Bonn on fourteen, fifteen of September 2017, and you can find a summary of the main outcome of the meeting in document information thirty-five. One of the main developments which materialized at the meeting were the addition of four new members to the task force, the government of the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, Eurobad Secretariat, the African Sustainable Energy Association, and Wind Europe. And even if a limited number, I think that this membership gives you an idea of the scope of the task force, which really aims at involving and facilitating contacts, exchange, interaction, and collaboration between a variety of sectors, from a government and various departments together, particularly environment and energy, but also a multi-governmental treaty, intergovernmental and non-governmental organization, the private sector. Another input to this meeting by the task force has been an analysis of the CMS national reports to COP ten and COP eleven in relation to the implementation of CMS resolutions dealing with the interaction of migratory species with energy, and this is included in information thirty-two. It's a very interesting document that, besides providing interesting information, also, I think provides an excellent example of the potentials of national report to provide insight, not only through the, say, analysis that we undertake as secretariat every three years. And yes, these are the main developments, last but not least, for those who are interested in knowing more about the activities of the task force, there will be a side event which is, which will take place tomorrow evening on reconciling energy development with migratory species conservation, and of course you are all invited to attend it. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, I would like just to remind that although this is mainly a report, however, I think the document does include a draft decision in annex one to the document, and I would also like to draw to the attention of the fact that the Session Committee of the Scientific Council at its second meeting also proposed a new decision, which is included in addendum one to the document. And unless this, the further examination of this document would go to a working group, as secretariat would like to know the position of this meeting in relation to the proposed new decision by the Session Committee of the Scientific Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Marco, secretariat. Yes, we've got another suggested decision, which I think it's worth us just reflecting on briefly, if it's acceptable to the meeting, both the draft decision in the original paper and the additional decision suggested by the Session Committee of the Scientific Council, and then we can move on, but otherwise we can set up an ad hoc working group. So, can I invite comments on both of these draft decisions please? EU.
Thank you Chair. European Union and its member states welcome and appreciate the work done by the energy task force. We would like to highlight the importance of rapid development of renewable energy technologies as a key response to the urgent threat of climate change. At the same time, we need to realize that the deployment of renewable energy and associated infrastructure, such as power lines, may result in negative environmental impacts, including impacts on migratory species and their habitats. Therefore, we are, we welcome that the energy task force is searching out to various other organizations and institutions working on this issue, with a view to intensifying efforts to reconcile renewable energy production with migratory species conservation. Ensuring reconciliation between renewable energies and species conservation remains a continuous conservation challenge and a priority for the EU and its member states. So, therefore, we can support the draft decision on energy and migratory species. Thank you Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So we have the question on about the draft decision in the document, but we also have a proposed extra decision that came from the Scientific Council. Can I assume that you also support the recommendation of the Scientific Council? I see nodding, any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll say that the, this meeting, the COW, endorses the proposed decision with the addition of the extra draft decision recommended by the Scientific Council, and will make that recommendation to the Finery. Thank you very much secretariat, and thank you very much for the work of the task force. Right, we're moving on. The next item is item twenty-four point four point seven, addressing unsustainable use of terrestrial and avian wild meat, of the document of the same number. Secretariat will introduce the document. Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. This document is on addressing unsustainable use of terrestrial and avian wild meat. Unsustainable consumption of wild meat affects species across the globe. This document outlines the consumption patterns of rural and urban populations in Latin America, Africa, and Asia with regard to wild meat and the implications on the conservation status of the species. To date, it is not entirely clear how exactly CMS-listed species have been affected by unsustainable wild meat consumption. And the decision in this document is seeking to fill the gap in knowledge through the preparation of an analysis on how direct and indirect impacts of wild meat harvest affect terrestrial and avian CMS-listed species. Also, the decision provides for the COP presidencies of CBD, CITs, and CMS to raise the importance of unsustainable harvest and consumption within the global policy agenda, and for CMS cooperation with FAO and their program that they lead on sustainable wildlife management. And that would be to find solutions to unsustainable trade and consumption in selected countries on the ground. This decision also proposes that CMS collaborates with CBD very closely to further elaborate technical guidance for better governance towards a sustainable bushmeat sector. And that is it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretariat. Before we open the floor, can I ask whether the terrestrial working group has considered this and whether you've reached a conclusion?
It was discussed earlier today, but not finalized yet. Perhaps the Chair would like to give an update.
I'll seek comments from parties on this item. That's, any parties wish to comment? No? Well, I think in that, well, does the Chair of the working group wish, yes, we have ACAP wishes to say something, or well, I think it's ACAP, depending on what hat you're wearing, Barry, but I'll invite the Chair of the working group to comment first.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We addressed this particular item this afternoon, and we are close to a decision which will be presented to you tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Chair. ACAP, or Barry, do you wish to, sorry, I'm calling you Barry, but you know, you're a trans Tasman mate, so I'm allowed to do that. Kiwis are allowed to call Australians by their first name.
That's absolutely correct. We understand where we're coming from. Now, right now, I'm wearing my ACAP cap, and I just thought I would bring to the attention of the CMS an emerging threat for seabirds that we recently became aware of at the recent advisory committee meeting that we held in New Zealand last month. And I've got to say, this came as a bit of a surprise to us all, but the threat is, the information we received is that some observations taken on fisheries operating within the South Atlantic region indicate that many seabirds are being deliberately captured and killed by fishing crews working on vessels, in particular squid jigger vessels. The scale of this deliberate take is still not fully understood, but the report that we received indicated the potential for thousands of birds to be affected. The birds most at risk are the larger seabirds, such as the albatrosses. And we note that since two thousand and five, antipodean albatrosses, which is a New Zealand species, have declined by fifty percent, and we've been wondering why this had actually been occurring, because we didn't see an increase in fishing effort in the known range of these birds. But we think there's now a possibility that deliberate harvest with the squid jiggers that are operating in that area on the high seas may be contributing to this decline. So what we're doing, we're going to prepare a paper for the next meeting of our advisory committee on intentional take of albatrosses. There's always been a little bit of this, but never at the sort of levels that we think that may now be occurring. This, the paper we have in front of us now is particularly relevant, I think, to the work of this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, ACAP, and it's disturbing news indeed, but certainly it highlights the need for action on this front. So with that, I think I'll adjourn discussion on this matter and awaits the report, the CRP, that comes on this item from the terrestrial working group. Thank you very much. The next item is Sustainable Tourism and Migratory Species. The term tourism is, the word tourism is supposed to be on in the title of this one. Twenty-four point four point eight, and I think the Philippines are going to introduce the document, and then we'll have an opportunity to respond and discuss. Thank you, Philippines.
Thank you very much, Chair. Sustainable tourism is recognized as a positive driver towards environmental protection, eradication of poverty, improved quality of life, the empowerment of local communities, and its positive impact to the three dimensions of sustainable development, particularly in developing countries. Wildlife tourist interaction involving a range of terrestrial and marine migratory species such as birds, marine turtles, whales, dolphins, dugongs, sharks, rays, seals, among others, increasingly plays a significant role in the global ecotourism industry. With proper guidance and appropriate regulations, ecotourism involving migratory species can increase awareness and drive positive change in the attitudes towards conservation of migratory species. This industry also provides a sustainable source of livelihood for host communities and generates resources to support protection of migratory species and their habitats. Through this proposed resolution, the Philippines appeals to the parties to adopt appropriate measures such as national action plans, regulations, and codes of conduct, and additional legal frameworks and legislation to ensure ecotourism activities do not negatively affect species anywhere within their migratory range. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much for your introduction, Philippines. Do I have any comments from parties on this? I have a request from the EU for the floor. Any other parties who wish to comment? You can think about it while the EU makes their intervention. EU, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, EU and its member states recognize the importance of promoting sustainable tourism and ensuring that tourism activities do not negatively affect species anywhere within their migratory range. The draft resolution focuses on an important issue. However, the text of the draft resolution is a bit general, and therefore, rephrasing some of the parts in the draft resolution would strengthen the resolution. So we feel that, also that efficient implementation of existing guidelines, plans, and strategies, and appropriate measures taken at a national level play a crucial role in ensuring that tourism activities are carried out in a way that does not have a negative effect on migratory species. So the EU and member states support the adoption of a resolution on sustainable tourism and migratory species with those amendments made, and we have sent the secretariat. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, EU. That's very constructive support for that. Can I hear from Ecuador, please? Thank you very much, Ecuador. Again, that's a very constructive suggestion that you've made in terms of process. Are there any other parties who wish to comment? And if there are, we have Norway. And then if there aren't any after that, then I'll suggest a way forward to progress this. Norway, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, indeed, generally speaking, we do support this and thank the Philippines for producing this. However, we think, as was indicated by the EU, it's a bit of a mix text in the resolution. There is also a reference to follow-up of a guidance, which is not yet there. So we think that this proposal should be reduced a bit, rewritten, focus on the need to regulate ecotourism through a guidance document on sustainable tourism, and we could see decisions on reports on established systems by the parties, and through external resources, we can indeed develop such a guidance document. However, you look at it, we think that the draft should be structured more in relation to how far this work is, are today, and who is doing what, so, and this should be reflected through a decision. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Norway. And I'm assuming you're not volunteering to draft it. You seem to be quite busy. But, so, before I make a suggestion, I'll just make sure, are there any other parties who wish to comment? No, I don't see any. So I think what we'll suggest is we'll set up a contact group to finalize this document, and with input, or coordinated by the Philippines, with input from EU, Ecuador, and Norway, if you're able. I think we've had some very constructive suggestions at enhancing this draft resolution, and if Philippines are prepared to be at the heart of redrafting, taking on board the suggestions, then I'm sure the Secretariat can assist with that. Borja, I think in the Secretariat will help to facilitate that and provide you with a room and so on. That's my understanding. So Philippines, are you comfortable with that way forward? Do you receive comments and input from other parties? I see a thumbs up. So those parties who have commented and any other who wish to input into this then can work with the Philippines and the Secretariat, Borja, and I have a nod from EU as well. I think that's a good way of resolving this. Clearly, there's a desire for it. So, excellent. So according to our agenda, we're now at the lunch break, but you're not going to have a break, because we're speeding up and doing quite well, I believe, but I should be careful what I say. There is a slight possibility we'll go slightly over time tonight, but we'll make an assessment of that in due course. At the moment, we're doing okay. So the next item is the Philippines again. You're being not only hard at work preparing this meeting and hosting us, but hard at work preparing some very useful contributions to the meeting. So it's twenty-four point four point nine, Promoting Marine Protected Area Networks in ASEAN Region, and I invite the Philippines to introduce the document.
Thank you, Chair. Marine Protected Area Networks, or EMPS, benefit many migratory wildlife species. The various habitats of EMPS provide resting and feeding areas for many migratory birds and large marine vertebrates. This resolution addresses the critical importance of connectivity for the conservation and management of migratory species, highlighted in CMS resolutions ten point three and eleven point twenty-five, wherein parties are invited to explore the applicability of ecological networks to marine migratory species, and recommend actions for advancing the design and implementation of ecological networks to address the needs of migratory species. With globally imported marine and coastal biodiversity in the East and Southeast Asia region currently facing complex threats such as habitat change, over-exploitation, pollution, and the impacts of climate change, NPAs and NPA networks that are effectively managed are important tools in protecting and conserving ecosystems, critical habitats, and migratory species. The adoption of the COP, of this resolution underscores the importance of the collaboration from all range states of migratory species, including non-parties, which is needed for the sustainable development of both wildlife and its habitat. Party and non-party range states of migratory species in the ASEAN region are encouraged to participate in promoting marine protected area networks and connectivity to improve the governance of important sites for migratory species, and support internationally coordinated efforts for conservation and management. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Philippines. I'm not, I don't think the Aquatic Working Group Chair is in the room right now, so we might find out whether, well, maybe Philippines can tell us whether the Aquatic Working Group has actually discussed this item. You know Philippines?
Mr. Chair, we will check and get back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll open the floor for discussion on this paper, this document, so do I have any requests for the floor from parties on this document? We have the EU.
Yes, just to maybe help you out here, our understanding is that it was asked if there was any need to discuss this point, and then there was no request for discussion. So I think we can consider that it has been dealt with by the working group with no need for discussion.
I appreciate that analysis of the situation. That's excellent. Thank you very much. So it's been discussed by the working group. The working group are comfortable with the document as it is. Do I have any other comments? So I have no comments, and so congratulations, Philippines. So I think this committee can endorse this document, and we'll pass it on to the plenary for, recommend its adoption, the plenary. Very good. So, but you're not off the hook yet. Sorry, I shouldn't use that term hook. That's the wrong one. You still have some work to do, Philippines, because I will invite you to introduce the next document, twenty-four point four point ten, Promoting Conservation of Critical Intertidal and Other Coastal Habitats for Migratory Species. Philippines, please.
Thank you, Chair. Intertidal and associated coastal and estuarine habitats are of critical importance for multiple migratory species, including many of those listed on Appendix One. including many of those listed on Appendix 1 and Appendix 2 of the Convention, including but not restricted to birds, seals, cetaceans, dugongs, turtles, and fish. These habitats serve as areas for breeding, staging during migration, molting, feeding, and during non-breeding periods. However, despite international conservation attention and recognition and national conservation programs, intertidal and associated coastal habitats in many parts of the world remain subject to extreme pressures from land claim for development, pollution, and inappropriate and unsustainable uses, which remove and degrade the capacity of these habitats not only to support migratory and other species, but also to sustain human communities dependent on the multiple ecosystem services of fully functional intertidal and associated coastal habitats. By protecting these vital ecosystems, we complement the efforts of other biodiversity-related conventions in protecting important migratory wildlife resources that are dependent on these areas. The spirit of this resolution is to request the secretariat to work actively with other relevant multilateral environmental agreements for funding to initiate a global coastal conservation forum to raise the profile of intertidal wetland conservation efforts because they benefit people and migratory species. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Philippines. Do I have any requests for the floor for comment on this document? I see the European Union. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. EU and its member states reckon, recognize the critical importance of intertidal and associated coastal and estuarine habitats for multiple migratory species worldwide. We also understand the urgent need to significantly enhance efforts to conserve and promote the sustainable use of these habitats. We fully encourage the collaboration and synergies between CMS and Ramsar Convention. However, in the first draft resolution, several overlaps occurred in between those two conventions. Therefore, the specific role and additional value of CMS in relation to the coastal habitat protection should be clear and reflected in anticipated initiatives. Thus, the EU and member states would like to see more specific role of CMS in the coastal habitat and species protection and therefore would be glad to suggest some amendments to the document by clarifying these added values and the scope of CMS. And we have also already talked to the Philippines and are willing to discuss and introduce those amendments to the text. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, EU. So it may well be that we can work in the same way as we have for the one before last. But first, I'll seek a comment from any other party. I have a comment from Birdlife International. Any other parties? Birdlife, please.
Mr. Chair, we welcome the resolution. It's a significant step forward in conserving intertidal and associated coastal and estuarine habitats. Here in the East Asian-Australasian Flyway, there is an urgent need to protect remaining intertidal habitats for endangered migratory shorebird species like the Far Eastern Curlew. Coastal habitats along the East Asian-Australasian Flyway are under immense pressure from a number of threats, and we are heartened to see more and more concerted actions to protect remaining intertidal and coastal habitats. At the southern end of the East Asian-Australasian Flyway, Australia has made significant contributions towards protecting non-breeding habitats for the Far Eastern Curlew. We thank Australia and its government for their ongoing efforts to protect this endangered species. It's very much appreciated. Birdlife International is concerned, however, about a proposed development in Moreton Bay, Australia, a Ramsar-listed wetland, key biodiversity area, and one of the most important wintering sites for the Far Eastern Curlew and many other migratory species. This development could see construction of activities within the current boundaries of the site. The proponent is currently seeking approval from the Australian Government under Australia's federal environmental law. We therefore urge the Australian Government to reject the current development proposal for Tunda Harbour in Moreton Bay as we are concerned that this might create a precedent. In this respect, the Birdlife partner in Australia, Birdlife Australia, would be very happy to provide any information and technical support required to assist the government of Australia. Thank you.
Thank you, Birdlife. I invite Australia to address us, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can Australia start by taking the opportunity to thank the government of the Philippines for preparing the resolution on promoting conservation of critical intertidal and other habitats for migratory species? Australia recognizes that the global loss of intertidal habitats is negatively impacting biodiversity and people's livelihoods that depend on them. In our region, the East Asian-Australasian Flyway, the loss of intertidal habitats is severely impacting a number of migratory species, particularly shorebirds. Australia fully supports the draft resolution and encourages its implementation, particularly in the East Asian-Australasian Flyway. Supporting this resolution will facilitate the recovery of several appendix-funded species like Far Eastern Curlew and the Great Knot. Australia thanks Birdlife International's intervention on this important resolution. I'd like to advise parties to CMS that Australia is fully aware of our obligations under the Ramsar Convention. Australia was one of the first countries to sign the convention and has currently got 65 wetlands of international importance listed, covering more than 8 million hectares. A proposal to develop a proportion of Tunda Harbour has indeed been received by the Australian Department of the Environment and Energy. The department has commenced a process of rigorous environmental assessment of the proposal and will ensure we fully consider any impact of the proposal on the Moreton Bay Ramsar site. Lastly, I'd add that no decision has yet been made that the project will proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia. Do I have any other requests for the floor? Yes, Norway. Thank you. Norway?
Thank you very much, Chair. We too would like to lend our support to this excellent proposal coming from the Philippines. I think we all know it's been a dramatic decline of these intertidal zones, especially in this part of the world, but also in other parts of the world. And as we all know, these are crucial sites on the flyway and certainly also for our climate, for mitigating climate effects and also, of course, as a habitat for natural creatures living in these areas. They are not just there for humans to be filled in and destroyed in that sense. As we all know too, that the text of the convention indeed does have a focus on issues like connectivity and networking through the fact that we need to conserve and manage properly important staging sites and also, you know, sites having other functions important for our species. So I just want to advocate that this convention and this COP, after this COP, does indeed forward this resolution as one of the more important results of this COP and try to promote it. And in relation to other issues on our agenda, I think this should be more or less a starting point of the CMS stepping up its efforts in the direction of connectivity and networking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norway. And so I'm just reflecting what you said. A request that this item or this matter, this document, if adopted, eventually should be the basis of quite a high level of public awareness raising and publicity. That's the point you're making. It's important, but it's important to shout about it too. Thank you. So regarding a way forward for this, I think I'll just follow the suggestion of the EU, who already got text and worked with the Philippines. And then I think you need to make a decision as to whether you provide us later on with suggested amendments that we can look at from the floor or whether it's done as a conference room paper. It's up to you. Whatever you feel is most efficient for us, and we'll deal with it. But pending some amendments, unless they're very small amendments that we can approve in principle now, would you like to just comment on that?
Thank you, Chair. As there are really quite a few of those, I can just go through them at this point and hopefully can adopt.
Yes, please do that because it will save us time later on.
Thank you. So firstly, we recommend that the paragraph Coastal Wetland Forum should be renamed as Coastal Forum. And then the paragraph 3, sorry, paragraph 2 should read out as follows. Request the secretariat to explore actively with other relevant multilateral environmental agreements, funding permitting, possibilities to set up a global coastal forum to raise the profile of intertidal wetland and associated coastal habitats convention and et cetera. In paragraph 3, we propose, in the third line, to read as follows. Under the proposed coastal forum to develop global guidance and et cetera. So deleting wetlands. In paragraph 4, we have the same proposal to say in the second line, under the coastal forum, and then moving on, of a caring for coasts initiative to promote restoration of coastal wetlands and other relevant habitats. And finally, I'm sorry, the next one, it's in paragraph 5, on the second row, where it reads, give us urgent protection to remaining intertidal wetlands and associated coastal habitats. So we propose to delete wetlands and introduce coastal habitats. And then finally, on paragraph 9, on the second row, we also would like to delete the word wetland and it would read withdraw or modify any further incentives to convert intertidal or other coastal habitats. That is, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, EU. Those were clear. Can I ask the Philippines whether you're comfortable with what the EU is recommending? We have a thumbs up from the Philippines. So what I'll ask EU to do is just provide text direct to the secretariat. And with those amendments, we can accept this document. Thank you, Philippines. And we will recommend that it's adopted by the plenary. All right. Thank you. That's excellent. I can tick another one off. The next item is going to be introduced by the Chair of the Scientific Council, Fernando. It's item, he's making his way to the podium, item 24.4.11, Improving Ways of Addressing Connectivity in the Conservation of Migratory Species. Fernando, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. This introduce, I'm here to introduce this document. The document contains a draft resolution and the draft decision. In terms of the conceptual framework and the general aspects of this document, this starts from the fact that migratory animals move across space and time and during, along these movements, they connect different habitats, sites, areas of the world. And in so doing, as a matter of fact, they connect the planet itself. We consider connectivity as being featured by different aspects. One is connecting sites through the movements of migratory animals. They also connect habitats, they connect individuals, because I mean connectivity is also the connectivity within individuals, within a same population migrating along same and shared migratory systems. And of course, this connectivity takes place along the whole migratory system. Understanding connectivity allows us to appreciate the needs migratory species have in terms of what are the habitats, what are the sites, what are the resources that they need in order to accomplish their migratory journey. And migration can only be accomplished if migratory animals have access of what of these resources they need in order to have energy enough, habitat enough, to complete their migratory cycle. There are two, sorry, there are two, let's say, types of connectivity. From another perspective, one is the biological connectivity, which has to do, as I said, with the more strictly biological aspects of these interconnections and takes place along corridors in terms of spatial connectivity and also connectivity among different habitats. But there is also, and I think this is really important for CMS, a sort of an institutional connectivity, which has to do with the fact that parties and countries sharing same populations of migratory animals should really do all possible efforts in order to align their political decisions and strategies in order to offer migratory animals same opportunities and conditions when, in terms of legislation at the national level, when they visit different countries along their and during their movements. So to quickly remind what the process has been leading to this draft resolution and decision, I mentioned already, in the first day that we have had scientifically strongly based process, the resolution in front comes from the scientific council itself. We have held two different scientific workshops with top experts on different aspects of connectivity in terms of problems of connectivity, but also in terms of taxa. There has then been an ample consultation and you have a document 20, which offers you an overview of different perspectives to connectivity across different taxa and also general aspects of connectivity. This resolution builds on the resolutions which have already been approved by CMS COPs on ecological networks. And the draft resolution speaks mostly on ways in which parties can integrate connectivity in their conservation strategy. Strategies, the draft decision speaks of how we can improve our knowledge of connectivity, how we can steer further research, and how we can develop guidance on assessing what are the threats to migratory species connectivity. The draft resolution so offers aspects, just putting the attention on what are the different aspects related to connectivity, when and how can we define priorities of conservation strategies which take into account this global perspective along the whole migratory system and also the need to express conservation objectives in terms of the whole migratory system. The draft resolution also takes into account a series of problems which you can read in this slide, which have to do with issues in discontinuity in migratory systems. And there are already different initiatives of CMS dealing with the different aspects which are listed here. Here, the proposal is to have a resolution which will really flag the whole issue from a global perspective. And another very important aspect, especially in the framework also of the impact of climate change to migratory species is, has to do with the very important functional aspect of connectivity in terms of resilience for migratory birds having to face new challenges as deriving from climate change, as well as the absolute need of connecting among different stakeholders and different parties and different institutions and different NEAs in order to ensure. MEAs in order to ensure that these global migratory systems be protected and conserved. And the draft decision proposes activities to the Secretariat, to the Scientific Council, and to the parties, and very briefly, this has to do with a more specifically scientific perspective of improving our knowledge about the existing data sets on connectivity, steering the, joining these different data sets in more integrated analysis, and offering guidance on assessing what are the threats to migratory species connectivity, support the development of Eurasian Atlas, African Atlas on bird migration as a first important step towards the global migration of animal movement, which is in the program of work at CMS, as has been discussed already in previous COPs, and improving the sharing of information on connectivity within and between CMS family instruments. So I think to come to a close, the idea here is to flag CMS as the connectivity convention. I think the connectivity falls perfectly in the spirit of CMS, of our convention, and I think it also, by linking and connecting these complex systems, it just loops into also the perspective of the scope of this call, so linking also human dimension with migratory species. So I think CMS has got a unique opportunity to connect the planet through migratory animals, and also to connect the human planet to migratory animals. So that's the idea behind this draft resolution and decision. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Fernando, and for your depiction of connectivity as the spirit of the convention. So with that, I'll open the floor for comment on the document and on the proposals.
India firmly considers science-based conservation management practices as a means to enhancing viable population of wildlife. Maintaining a healthy gene flow from source to sink is imperative in this regard. The policies and legislation in India give due credence to this respect and have prescribed adequate provisions in sustainability of managing such areas. India has been recently moving towards a landscape and seascape-based conservation approach from a protected area-based approach. The proof in this regard is the National Wildlife Action Plan, a plan for fifteen years which has just been released in the country. We believe that wildlife knows no political boundaries. Concerted action towards transboundary wildlife management is a key factor for the wildlife conservation internationally. India has been engaging in bilateral collaboration with its neighbours like Nepal, Bhutan, Bangladesh. Still, we believe that a lot is yet to be done. India supports the resolution contained in doc twenty-four, dot four, dot eleven, and also wishes to emphasize here the need for working towards strengthening and scientifically management, the wildlife landscapes and corridors, both within the range countries and between the nations, as well as in consonance to the principles of sovereignty. This would, we firmly believe, that the range countries in identifying the conservation needs, prioritizing them and implementing science-based practices through mutual cooperation, eventually assisting in realizing the target and shrine in strategic plan nine and ten by two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you Mr. Chairperson.
Thank you very much India. Next call on Norway.
Thank you very much Chair. This is yet another good resolution, if you ask me, both as Chair of the Standing Committee and as a representative for Norway. As I said earlier on on the last issue, there is an expectation already there in our, in the text of the convention. I wish to see a much higher focus and also a focus where CMS actually can make a huge difference into the future, and we also need to take on responsibility of following up on the text of the convention. So starting out now, as was explained by Fernando, to have even higher, much higher focus on habitats and corridors as spaces for our animals, and I should say also, as was mentioned by Fernando, for humans which are dependent on these habitats and its wildlife. And this is, one starting point is, as was suggested, to identify these important areas. And I would like to thank Italy in particular, as we know they have made a donation to identify important sites on the flyway, I think it's between Europe and Africa. That's one example, but we really need to continue. And the decisions on continuing this work should be fully supported, and I think this is where we can make a huge difference. And as we have discussed earlier on in our conference, related to be it dry land, grassland birds, or if it's large carnivores, immas, on the oceans, or wetlands, as we heard in the previous item, I mean, it's all, it's all connected, and we must step up and change our focus from only doing, you know, species by species, and as was suggested by India, it is as important, if not more important, to look at the habitats. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much Norway, and there's a theme coming through regarding the promotion of the decisions and resolutions that we agree on here. Next I'll call on EU.
Thank you Chair. EU and its member states express their gratitude to CMS Scientific Council, Secretariat, all related organizations, and the hosting country Italy for their initiative and support when organizing the two workshops in connectivity in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and seventeen. We recognize the indiscernible importance of enhancing the scientific knowledge and evidence, being the topics reviewed by these workshops, to feed the process of evolving insight of connectivity in implementation of the CMS. We are also grateful to the workshop meetings for the preparatory work and contribution to the draft, resolution, and decision for COP twelve. We appreciate the draft posing broadly the crucial issues related to connectivity. We express support for the adoption of the draft resolution, subject to some editorial points, particularly removing of reference to national reports, which we feel are premature and are better dealt with in the discussion under item nineteen point two of the COP twelve agenda. So Mr. Chair, we do have a proposal for one section to, for better wording, to reflect what the convention says, and we can read this one out and appoint to those two sections where we can see that can, we can delete from this resolution and move them to the national reports section. So in your hands.
EU, please provide us with your suggested amendments.
Thank you Chair. So the first one, in the draft resolution, the first section actually, I will just read it out as we proposed. Recording Article three point four of the convention, under which parties shall endeavor to conserve and where feasible and appropriate, restore the habitats of appendix one species, which are of importance in removing the species from danger of extinction, and to prevent, remove, compensate for, or minimize as appropriate obstacles that seriously impede the migration of the species. And Article V five, under which agreements in respect of appendix two species should provide for maintenance of a network of suitable habitats appropriately disposed in relation And we would like to propose the deletion of the sections which are following. I mean, in the same para, in the draft resolution, the section eleven, I guess, which starts taking note of UNEP, CMS, COP, document nineteen point two, resolution, and etcetera, to be deleted. And then after that, on the next page, point number four, further encourages parties to make good use of the questions, etcetera, to be deleted as well. And the last one is, under the draft resolution directed to parties, point twelve A A, we suggest the wording, the parties are invited to, as this amendment, as this is for parties to decide whether they wish to provide the support or not. We will provide those in writing as well. Thank you Chair.
Thank you EU. If I could just request, the second amendment was a bit fast for us to find out where exactly it was. If you could just repeat the second amendment.
Thank you. It's in the draft resolution, section eleven, which starts as taking note of UNEP, CMS, COP twelve, document nineteen point two slash resolution, and concerning the review of the format of the national reports, including the proposed questions relating to ecological networks and connectivity.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you EU. I'll just quickly ask Fernando to respond to those suggestions.
Yeah, thanks very much to the EU. I don't see any significant issue there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other requests for the floor to provide? We have Uganda and then Kenya.
Thank you Chair. Uganda would like to associate with the other parties in applauding the Scientific Council for formulating this positive decision and the resolution. Uganda is very much aware that restoration and rehabilitation of habitats and corridors is key to ensuring conservation and management of migratory species. We therefore thank the Scientific Council for coming up with this important document. Uganda fully supports adoption of the proposed decisions and the resolution. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Uganda and Kenya.
Thank you Chair. Kenya wants to thank the CMS Scientific Council for this draft resolution. We think that connectivity is very key, and also we are aware of the processes that are happening under various MEAs, to have designation of some areas which are part of the safe flyway. So we have a recommendation in annex one, paragraph five. Paragraph five captures the exchange of information with biodiversity-related MEAs, and it also captures various initiatives under IUCN, UNEP, and so on. And we have in mind the serial nomination of various lakes, rift valley lakes within a flyway. And already we have a process which we are working together in Kenya with the various parties, and the World Heritage Convention, to have a serial nomination in addition to already existing serial nomination of Lake elementita, Lake Nakuru, and Lake Bogoria. So we want this process to be captured, and therefore we have a recommendation, a recommended amendment to paragraph five, where we are adding on line number eight, paragraph five, to read as follows, I'm starting to where UNEP is, that the UNEP Global Connectivity Conservation Project, the IUCN WCPA Connectivity Conservation Species Group, and take cognizant, this is what we are adding now, take cognizant of the importance of serial nomination of world heritage sites under World Heritage Convention. We can provide this in writing, and email it to the Secretariat, to the recommended email. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Kenya. A quick response from.
Thanks very much Kenya for your support. Of course, this was meant to be just mentioning some of the many examples, but of course, I mean, if we can mention more, I think this is perfectly acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you Kenya, so if you could provide that wording, that would be great to the Secretariat. And I don't see any other flags, so yes, I have a flag from Angola please.
Donc je voulais dire que l'Angola support aussi cette résolution vu que ça s'encadre dans la proposition de l'inclusion de la gerale à la deux, c'est-à-dire que cet animal qui était fait dans la soullégion où elle se trouve, où la dernière population qui est en Angola doit traverser des obstacles pour partir de l'Angola et passer par la Nibir et aller jusqu'au Botswana. Donc il y a des obstacles, il y a ce qu'on appelle en anglais de faims, et voilà donc je pense que cette résolution sera un point intéressant pour. L'animal lui-même, il sait très bien ce qu'est son couleur biologique, si nous mettons d'établir des connectivités institutionnelles, merci.
Thank you very much Angola, and I had Costa Rica followed by Birdlife. Costa Rica please.
Gracias presidente, la región de América Central, el sur y el Caribe. Estamos apoyando esta propuesta de inclusión en la sesión de ahora. Muchas gracias.
Thank you Costa Rica. Birdlife International please.
Thank you Chair. Birdlife International fully supports the draft resolution as presented in twenty-four point four point eleven. Adequate conservation of migratory species means not only safeguarding the important areas where the species breed, sites where they congregate during migration, and areas where they spend the non-breeding part of the year, but also safeguarding the obvious and less obvious connections between those places, and improving the wider landscape through which many species migrate on a broad front. Many migratory species are at their most vulnerable when they are on the move. A slow attrition of habitat quality in the wider landscape, the gradual removal of all small stepping stones of habitat along the route, uncontrolled poaching in a few areas where individuals congregate on migration, are likely to be just as damaging as some of the more obvious physical infrastructure developments that may act as clear obstacles to migration. Birdlife welcome all efforts by national authorities to remote the topic of connectivity within their thinking, from infrastructure planning to protected area planning to policy measures to address issues affecting the wider landscape, and we welcome the expansion in thinking that this resolution represents. Additionally, we Additionally, we request consideration of including reference to the World Database on KBA's key biodiversity areas in Paragraph Six, Page Seven, as an important and relevant large-scale database. Many thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Birdlife. And I'm sure nobody is going to object to that suggested addition. So if you could just provide the words to the secretariat. Any other comments? I'd like to close this actually because there's very broad support. We've got a few minor amendments. So and with that, I'd like to thank the Chair of the Scientific Council and for all the good work and the enthusiasm that we heard for this piece of for this work. So subject to those amendments, we endorse the recommendations. And we will pass that recommendation on to the plenary. Okay, so we're moving on. I'm just going to have a quick consultation with the secretariat. Thank you for your patience. What we're discussing is our ability to push on till we get to item twenty five. Which might involve going over time a little bit by fifteen or twenty minutes possibly. So I'd seek the agreement of the interpreters that if we do push on and we go over time just a little bit, we'll still give you time to get to your working groups and so on, but just not much break between. Are interpreters comfortable with us pushing on for another twenty minutes? Thank, thank you very much, interpreters. And thank you for all your good work so far. So moving right along, item twenty four point four point twelve, Transfrontier Conservation Areas for Migratory Species. And the secretariat, Lisa will introduce this document.
Hello again. Document twenty four point four point twelve builds on three different resolutions previously existing. Which are Resolution ten point three, on the role of ecological networks in the conservation of migratory species. Resolution eleven point fourteen, on the program of work of migratory birds and flyways. And Resolution eleven point twenty five, on advancing ecological networks to address the needs of migratory species. It sets out standards to be applied in designating and implementing ecological networks. So basing on those previous resolutions. This document states that by definition CMS-listed species cross one or more national jurisdictional boundaries. Therefore, the establishment of transfrontier conservation areas which incorporate habitat of CMS-listed species supports the objective of CMS to conserve migratory species and their habitats. And at the same time, the CFCA approach combines policies on wildlife conservation with community development and with promotion of culture and peace, all under one umbrella. And this approach is considered crucial for migratory species conservation. Through these decisions, the tool of transfrontier conservation areas, CFCA's, is intended to be strengthened and also perhaps expanded to areas outside of Africa. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretariat. Can I ask whether this has been discussed at all in the terrestrial working group?
It has, and the working group has reached the consensus on the wording.
Thank you very much. So given that the working group has reached the consensus. Can we agree to recommend the adoption of this? Do we have any comments? I beg your pardon, we do have to wait. I'm getting ahead of myself. Do we have any comments? I see none, so I think we can move on and thank the secretariat and the working group for consideration of this. And we'll await the CRP when we can make our recommendation. Thank you. We'll await the CRP paper. The next item, again, secretariat, you're not off the hook yet. It's item twenty four point four thirteen, Community Participation and Livelihoods. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This document is on community participation and livelihoods. And it seeks to recognize the importance of community participation in conservation. And also the importance of the need of local communities to receive real livelihood benefits from conservation. Most CMS species action plans provide already for parties to cooperate with local communities. However, currently what does not exist within the CMS context is is an understanding or a set of best practices that would take into account the migratory nature of CMS species. And the fact that CMS species are shared resources. So through the compilation of best practices. Compilation and the sharing of such practices through workshops and various capacity building tools among parties. We intend to fill this gap of missing information. And that is all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretariat. And again, can I ask whether the working group has made its assessment and?
Yes, the working group has already discussed it and consensus has been reached on the wording.
Thank you. And so we have the call from Australia and from India. Just reiterating that the working group, there is a paper in the process, so there's been discussion about it there. So a call on Australia.
Thank you, Chair, and I didn't make it to the working group, I apologize. I've got quite a brief suggestion for wording change. I was looking to get more consistency in the references to indigenous peoples and local communities throughout the document. It's variously referred to in different ways in the different paragraphs, and I'm happy to send through suggestive amendments. But it's simply those words being added everywhere where it's relevant to do so. I believe that would make it more consistent with UN agreements such as the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure those suggestions will be very acceptable. Nodding of the head, India.
Thanks, Chair. India formally believes that community participation in the management of wildlife resources is and addressing the issue of livelihood of dependent communities paramount for ensuring better management of wildlife resources. India has taken steps way back in nineteen ninety for ensuring the community participation also benefit-sharing mechanism. And around now fifty million people are part of this endeavor. India therefore endorses the draft resolution and underlines the due importance to be assigned for community participation of the community and related livelihood issues for achieving a sustainable management and conservation of wildlife resources. Thank you.
Thank you, India. Do I have any other requests for the floor on this item? I see none, so we all adjourn discussion on it. But we assume, we know there has been agreement in the working group. And subject to the minor amendments suggested by Australia, we look forward to what the conference room paper has to say about it. Thank you. So we move to Future Shape. Item sixteen. And the secretariat? Is the secretariat ready to introduce sixteen point two, Restructuring the Scientific Council? And then we have under the same item seventeen point two, Appointment of Members of the Sessional Committee of the Scientific Council. Are these going to be introduced together? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to refer, as you just mentioned, to Document sixteen point two, progress in the implementation of Resolution eleven point four on the restructuring of the scientific council. This document reports on three main areas of activities relating to the implementation of Resolution eleven point four. Namely, the selection and appointment of the member of the scientific council, of the sessional committee of the scientific council for the intercessional period between COP eleven and COP twelve. The development of terms of reference for the scientific council. And the revision of the use of procedure of the scientific council. Well, the only, of these three activities, the only one for which a decision of this meeting is solicited is the one concerning the development of terms of reference for the scientific council. And therefore I will focus on this, on this particular activity. And of, but of course remain ready to provide any clarification as regards the other activities reported. Resolution eleven point four, request the secretariat to develop draft terms of reference for the scientific council. Based on the mandate, the secretariat has prepared draft terms of reference for the scientific council in consultation with the scientific council itself. And submitted the draft to the forty fourth meeting of the Standing Committee for its consideration. The Standing Committee reviewed and provisionally adopted the terms of reference with a view to their transmission and final consideration and as appropriate, adoption by the twelfth meeting of the conference of the parties. And these terms of reference is provisionally adopted by the Standing Committee are included in Annex One to Document sixteen point two. So the action recommended in relation to the terms of reference by COP twelve is to review and as appropriate adopt the terms of reference. And if so, consider approving the incorporation of the terms of reference in the consolidated resolution on the scientific council, which is submitted to this document as Doc twenty one point two point six. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marco. Do I have any comments? You see, you please.
Thank you, Chair. The EU and its member states acknowledge the work done by the members of the Sessional Committee of the Scientific Council during turnium two thousand and fifteen and seventeen. We support the adoption of the terms of reference in the consolidated resolution of the Scientific Council. But still do have some amendments in the annex which we are glad to provide the secretariat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, EU, and I'll come back to you if necessary. Do I have any other comments, requests for the floor on this matter? No, so EU, are the suggested amendments ones that we can deal with here?
Thank you, Chair. I will try. They are not that long, I hope. It's okay.
Just let us know which document.
These are for Document sixteen point two.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. So there's a general comment in the Para Three, on the terms of reference. For the, there is a reference to Resolution eleven point four. Actually, it's unknown to us how will, how will the references to previous resolutions work once the resolutions have been combined? So we suggest to amend this. Moving on, there's operating principles, number four, that we suggest to delete. Then moving on to section H, there's also a reference to Previous Resolution Number eleven two, which should be amended as well. And then there is, moving on to, there are fourteen responsibilities of the Scientific Council members. We have a suggestion to the line three. I will read it out. So in working groups, including attending as observers at meeting of the Sessional Committee or other meetings and using the interactive tools, et cetera. So to make it clear that scientific councils can attend session really as observers as well. And there are is some suggestions to the references as well in the Paragraph sixteen, which reflects the Resolution six point seven. And in paragraph seventeen, there's a reflection to Resolution six point seven as well. So we suggest to amend those as well. And it should be it. Thank you very much, Chair.
Should be it. Thank you very much, EU. I might just ask the secretariat to respond there. Particularly regarding the resolution, reference to, cross-referencing to resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Well, probably we might not be yet completely clear on how we will reference in the future previous resolutions that has been consolidated on other resolutions. This is something which is completely new to the convention. At the same time, it will be difficult to keep all documents and resolutions updated when referring to resolutions that are no longer in existence or that have changed name. The fact is that resolutions, even when repealed or amended will still remain as a as an official archive document. So from this point of view, they will remain available as a reference. Although of course, their provisions might no longer be valid. In which case it would be logical, of course, to amend the reference to the resolution. But it will still be possible to refer to the original resolution. The document will remain available. This is something on which I think we are not really fixed in the secretariat yet. I also turned to my colleagues. Is an issue we will have to tackle globally. And we expect a lot of this situation when all the various consolidations, partial repeal will come to the attention of this committee. So a rule will have to be established. And of course, we will need also the agreement of the parties on that. of the parties on that. So, at the moment, I would say that probably we will take, act on that, depending on whatever decision we will make on the reference to former resolutions in documents. Another comment perhaps I, to which I can provide some reply, no, I think probably that's, that's all I can, I can say at the moment. For the rest, of course, we took note of all the other amendments proposed.
Thank you, secretariat. I'll just add something here. I think with respect to the reference to the resolutions, I don't think there's any problem with amending it on this paper. There is a wider challenge, which I'm sure can be dealt with, so I don't think there's any problem. I would recommend to the secretariat from the chair that they amend it, or if they feel that's, that's difficult, change the wording to simply the relevant resolution, because in both of those, in all of those cases, it's inter alia, so it's not a specific resolution to, a specific reference to a specific thing and a specific resolution. So I think the secretariat can amend it according to your wishes. And it sounds like there's not a problem with your other suggested amendments. So if I don't have any other requests for the floor on this, and I'm assuming that we're still just dealing with 16.2, you may have some suggestions for 17.2 as well. But if we're happy with 16.2, with amendments as suggested by EU, then I think we can proceed. Okay, so I think I'll wait until the end of this item, and then if we're agreed, then we can make our recommendation accordingly. So EU, do you have comments on 17.2?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Chair. So, EU and its member states acknowledge the work done by the secretariat and support clarifying the process of appointing the sessional committee of the scientific council. We do support the proposal to appoint alternatives, as well as members of the sessional committee, and will put forward proposals for the European members of the sessional committee, including such alternatives. With respect to the need for renewal of COP-appointed councillors on the sessional committee, we do not believe this is necessary if the number of COP-appointed councillors remains at nine or below. If, however, the Conference of the Parties decided to appoint more than nine COP-appointed councillors, then COP will also need to decide which should serve on the sessional committee. If this occurs, we suggest that a process which identifies and prioritizes the key expertise needed in a forthcoming triennium would be needed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, secretariat?
No, thank you. I, well, this is clear to us, as a recommendation, of course, provided it is shared by, by the rest of the, of the committee, it could be implemented. We will check the extent to which this decision will be reflected in a document, that could be the rules of procedure of the scientific council, for instance, or, or also the terms of reference. We still have to assess which would be the appropriate place to record whatever decision would be made in relation to the, could also be an amendment to the resolution itself, because this, this request of clarification comes from, say, ambiguity in the original resolution 11.4. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we can agree to the recommendations and endorse them, and pass the recommendations on, subject to the amendments that have been suggested, pass them on to the plenary. So I'd like to move on to the final item for today. We've caught up. So congratulate yourselves. Very soon I'll let you stand up, but not quite yet. So have we got the secretariat ready to introduce document 25.3, please? Thank you, secretary. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are now with document 25.3 on taxonomy and nomenclature. This document has two parts. One is on bird taxonomy, and the other one is on fish taxonomy. So I will introduce the bird taxonomy. We have a PowerPoint on the screen. Not sure how it make it work. Ah, there you go. Okay. Okay, so in resolution 11.19, which was adopted in Quito, there was a request to the scientific council to consider the implications of adopting as a standard reference for the passerine, for the little birds, a publication known as The Handbook of the Birds of the World, and Relive International: Illustrated Checklist of the Birds of the World, Volume 2, passerines. And this is somehow a continuation of the policy adopted at the same Conference of Parties where the volume 1 of this same publication for the non-passerines was adopted. So the implications of adopting volume 2 for the passerines is, at species level, there are a number of species in appendix 1, 4 in particular, that change name, but it's just one synonym. And then there is one merge, two species merge in one, there is one merge case. And for appendix 2, at species level, there are again two species which change name, it's just a synonym, and one merge which is in fact the same merge as for appendix 1. So minor changes at the species level. But then, as you know, the CMS appendices for birds, in particular appendix 2, includes a number of family listings at the, at the family level. And in this case, the adoption of this publication has bigger effects, because there are changes in the families. For example, the Anatidae are split in two families. There could be Rostridae is split in three families, the Scoropathyde in two families, and the Musticapide, you know, the little songbirds, is split in 50 families, although not all of them contain migratory species. And according to the preliminary analysis, it could be only 10 families that would have to be listed. So if we go to the next slide, there you go. The scientific council is undertaking an analysis of the disaggregation of the bird families, which are included in appendix 2. And you have a preliminary report that was tabled for the meeting of the sessional committee of the scientific council, which took place in July, last July, in Bonn, this is the inf 3. And there you have a preliminary analysis of the breakdown of the families. This is ongoing work of the scientific council. This study has not yet been finalized. It's being led by the two appointed councillors for birds of the scientific council. It is a very detailed and thorough study, aiming at looking at which are the particular migratory species which are included in these new families. So what we are proposing to the Conference of Parties, this meeting, is to adopt the proposed reference, The Handbook of the Birds of the World, Volume 2, as a standard reference for the passerine birds, which would be consistent with the decision adopted at COP11, which was to take the volume 1 for the non-passerines. And then wait until the study which is, with the scientific council is undertaking, is finalized, and we have the results, so that the appendices can be amended according to the, to the report of the scientific council on the bird families. And I think with this, the avian part, finalizes. Hand over to Andrea.
Thank you, Bora. Andrea?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. Yes, related to fish species, the secretariat proposes to refer to a different standard reference, since the previous reference, Eschmeier 1990, is no longer in print and was replaced by an online version, Eschmeier et al. Catalog of Fishes. We propose to refer to this online version in future. And since this online version is continuously being updated, we propose to refer to it at the time of listing of a species. That means if a species gets newly listed on the appendices of the convention, the secretariat would be requested to make an hard copy excerpt from the online reference, and to keep that as the standard reference for that species. We also propose that scientific council should be instructed or requested to review before each COP the standard reference, and to compare it with our appendices, and to make a recommendation to the COP as to whether the appendices should be amended if there were any changes. We also recommend that while doing so, the scientific council should apply a very conservative approach, bearing in mind that we would like to avoid any inconsistencies with, for example, the appendices of CITES, and also bearing in mind that at the time of, yeah, reflection of a taxonomic change in Eschmeier, the whole scientific community might not have agreed with it. So therefore, we propose to take a precautionary approach and a conservative approach. We also recommend that should there be any future online versions for other taxonomy group, that COP might consider to adopt online versions also for other taxonomic groups as standard reference. And I would like also to draw your attention to Annex 3 in this document, in which we have provided an overview of our appendices with regards to fish species, and the status of the online version of Eschmeier on the 20th of April this year. We presented this to the scientific council in order to review discrepancies, and we have identified discrepancies regarding the genesis of Mobula and Manta. However, the scientific council recommends not to adopt the changes at this COP, hence it is not suggested or proposed in this document. Thank you.
Thank you very much, secretariat. And I understand that these recommendations have been discussed in the two relevant working groups, and that they have reached agreement, is this correct? Not, not yet in the birds, but?
In our aquatic species working group, the document was discussed, and no changes were proposed.
Thank you. So we have, the aquatic working group has reached a conclusion, and there will be a contribution to a document, CRP, as a result of that. The bird working group is still deliberating, and so there is an opportunity to, for further input through the bird working group. But I will ask for any comments, and I see the EU.
Thank you, Chair. EU and its member states do not support the adoption of the draft resolution on taxonomy and nomenclature, included in Annex 4. We do apologize of this intervention, but there are actually three quite complex matters which cause us concern. So firstly, we understand that the scientific council is still working through the implications of adoption of Handbook of the World, Volume 2, and that a detailed analysis will not be available until the next meeting of the sessional committee of the scientific council. Although we do not have a problem with Handbook of the World, Volume 2, we therefore consider it premature to adopt Volume 2 of the Handbook of the Birds of the World, as we do not know what we are signing up for. This creates uncertainty for parties which have a direct link between the national legislation and listing in the appendices of international treaties. Secondly, the 10th meeting of the advisory committee of the Agreement of the Conservation of Albatrosses and Petrels, ACAP, September 2017, New Zealand, decided not to change the taxonomy used by ACAP. As we consider consistency of approach between instruments within the CMS family to be very important, we consider CMS should maintain the same taxonomy on albatrosses and petrels as used by ACAP. Thirdly, the record of the 29th meeting of the CITES Animal Committee, which occurred in July, after the second meeting of the sessional committee of the scientific council, states that the Animal Committee recognizes that, that at present, it is not appropriate to accept the proposed synonymization of the rare genus Manta into Mobula. For this reason, the EU and its member states propose that it should be made explicit that the synonymization of Manta and Mobula is excluded from the adoption of the use of the online version of Eschmeier. And there is also a fourth point, which is not currently included in the document in front of us, which the EU and its member states would like to raise, namely mammal taxonomy. Given the number of references for terrestrial mammals that now exist beyond Wilson and Reader 2005... that now exist beyond Wilson and Reader 2005, we consider the Scientific Council should review the scientific reference literature with a view to bringing a recommendation to COP 13. So, Mr. Chair, I do apologize at the end of the day for these remarks, but given the comment just made, the EU and its member states consider that a number of changes are needed to the proposed resolution. In particular, in the annex, which lists the preferred standard references for the Convention, our proposal is to discuss implementation of relevant taxonomic issues in avian, aquatic and terrestrial working groups still. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, EU. And of course, there is no need to apologize. That's what the meeting is for, is to address these issues. So I appreciate your honest remarks. I'll consider the best way forward. And there may be some suggestions from the floor. But I've recognized Saudi Arabia who wish to speak before we work out how to proceed. Saudi Arabia, you...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like first to thank the Secretariat for the work of this document. And I would like just to raise that Saudi Arabia supporting the, using the passerine species for the bird life, The Handbook of the Bird of the World, the illustrated... And for the others, I think also we support for the other species, fish and fishes and mammals. We are also supported, but we don't mind to discuss it also in the working group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So as I, well, before I try to summarize, I will see whether there are any other comments. No. As I see it, we have a support from Saudi Arabia. We have a aquatic working group that we understand has come to a conclusion. We don't, oh, we have the Chair of the Aquatic Working Group here, so I might seek some comment from him. But the EU have some issues with part of that. So there may be some negotiation still required. However, if the Aquatic Working Group has come to a conclusion and the EU was part of that, then I'm not sure why that wasn't resolved at the time. For the mammal suggestion, that's something that the terrestrial working group will have to consider if they haven't done so already, because that's something new. And then finally, for the birds, clearly, there is an opportunity for your concerns to be aired and addressed in the Birds Working Group because it's yet to complete its work. So I think that solves potentially, at least as an avenue for solving the bird group issue. I'd be quite happy to, for you to request that the terrestrial working group thinks about the mammal issue that you have. But with regards to the aquatic suggestion, I would like the Chair of the Aquatic Working Group, if he's happy to, to make a comment. Eastbury.
Thank you. Firstly, I'm not a taxonomist, I just need to put that out there. But we did discuss this in relation to fish. And the Secretariat cleared up a few of the misunderstandings that perhaps some of us in the working group had. And we made no changes to the recommendations as they were. We thought that the process described was not going to cause us any particular issues. Though we, the focus was more on sturgeon. And as I recall the discussion, though Mobulids rays were mentioned as well. While I've got the floor, and I might just change now from being the Aquatic Working Group Chair to the ACAP situation, because I heard the mention of Albatrosses and Petrels when I was actually just discussing the agenda for tonight's working group meeting. So I didn't catch it all. But I may need, I may need to attend the Avian Working Group, perhaps, and explain what ACAP's position has been on that. And I think there's some misconception about what ACAP was maybe thinking about doing with the approach to taxonomy at this stage. I think those concerns could be a bit unwarranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ACAP. And I've also asked the Secretariat to just enlarge on the question of the Mobulids.
Thank you, Chair. I understood that, we understood that the EU had concerns to adopt a new taxonomy for Mobulids. And since this was also not recommended by the Scientific Council, it would not happen. So there is no automatism in that sense. The Scientific Council would review the changes before each COP and would make a recommendation for the decision at the COP. It only applies to newly listed species, for which we would refer to the online version of Ashmeier at the time of listing.
Does that satisfy you with regard to that particular issue, EU? And while you're thinking about that, I think the way forward, well, I think we have an opportunity to resolve the bird issues within the Bird Working Group with extra input from ACAP. If, Bora, can you just confirm that's... So there's an opportunity for that, thank you. And with regard to the mammals, I will here give a remit, if you like, to the terrestrial working group. The Chair is not in the room, so the Secretariat will have to transmit that. Just to give you the opportunity to have an input there, to make your suggestion, to see whether that's possible and let the working group discuss it. Does that's a way forward for the various questions and issues you have? Does that satisfy you, EU, for now?
Thank you, Chair. So, yeah, we have a solution for Arabian and terrestrial. But at this point, I really have not the latest information what was actually discussed in the Aquatic Working Group as being here. So I maybe would like to still raise this issue if it's still possible in the Aquatic Working Group, if it's not ending its work or is it still going on?
I'll just ask the Chair to respond to that.
I didn't hear all the question, to be honest. But the Aquatic Working Group is looking to meet tonight at quarter past seven at the request of the Philippines to meet at that time, simply to avoid an important side event that they're hosting. Is that, have I answered the question or...?
Yes, I think that at least the EU will come to you and just clarify what opportunity they have, that their concerns to be...
And we have actually emailed out a very short agenda. And I did discuss with a member of the EU's delegation about the need to meet tonight. Thank you.
Okay, that opportunity is there. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, all participants on this and the other agenda items for today. And with that, pending some announcements from the Secretariat, I would close this session. Thank you. Secretariat?
Thank you. I'll just tell you about the working groups tonight. So the Bureau has changed rooms again, so it's back to Room 8. And it'll meet 10 minutes after we finish here. The Budget will meet again in that same room. It's now, as soon as possible. Both the avian and aquatic working groups will meet at 7:15 PM. A terrestrial will meet also now. The Review of Decisions Working Group has finished its work. The Small Working Group on the Strategic Plan and National Reporting Format will meet in Room 309, also immediately. And I wasn't able to find out if the Credentials Committee was meeting. I wonder if the Secretariat or the Chair could confirm that. Or a member of the committee, who knows? I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get confirmation. Well, we assume the Credentials Committee knows whether they're meeting or not. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And we'll see you here tomorrow morning. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.